Distinguished representatives, I declare open the second plenary meeting. This afternoon, we will continue consideration of Agenda Item 7, general debate, to be continued thereafter with the working group. As in the morning, all statements will be delivered from national seats and the microphone will start blinking at three minutes. As we decided this morning, the microphones will go off at the time when four minutes has been concluded. So this has been the practice already in the morning, so there should not be any surprise to any of the speakers. And I would just recall that according to the 26th June decision of the Bureau, only in-person statements are allowed during the plenary meeting, and the ministers and vice-ministers were given precedent on the list. They spoke earlier today, and then they were followed by states speaking on behalf of groups, and then time slots were allotted on first come, first served basis in accordance at the time when states had requested their speaking slot. And I also recall that states may submit written statements only if they so wish instead of in-person statements. I would invite delegations to please check the latest list of speakers available at the conference officer's desk, as there have been multiple changes. And let us proceed immediately with our first speaker. And we have Her Excellency Ms. Maria Michael, permanent representative to the United Nations of Cyprus. You have the floor.
Cyprus aligns itself with a joint statement delivered on behalf of the Group of Friends on the review of the ICC's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression, and a cross-regional statement expressing support to the ICC. I also wish to add some remarks in my national capacity. Cyprus reaffirms its steadfast commitment to the Rome Statute and expresses full support for the ICC. Together with other state parties, we have consistently worked to consolidate the ICC as a strong, independent, and impartial judicial institution. As one of the first countries to ratify the Kambala amendments, Cyprus views this special session as a unique and important opportunity to harmonize the court's jurisdiction. The jurisdictional regime adopted in Kambala was a landmark achievement, but it left a notable accountability gap, particularly in situations where aggression is committed by nationals of non-state parties. This gap risks creating a space where impunity can persist, undermining the credibility and deterrent power of the court. For Cyprus, this is not just a theoretical concern. We have experienced firsthand the devastating consequences of foreign aggression, the scars of which remain visible, and justice has long remained out of reach. This reality reinforces our conviction that accountability must not depend on the identity or status of the aggressor. In this regard, Cyprus welcomes this special session, aiming at expanding and strengthening the ICC's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression. It is our view that the court should be able to exercise jurisdiction over all four core crimes under the same legal conditions. Madam President, this special session is not only an opportunity to reflect on our collective achievements, but also a call to action. Thus, Cyprus urges all state parties to the Rome Statute to participate actively and support the process of amending and strengthening the court's jurisdiction on the crime of aggression, in order to strengthen the fight against impunity for this crime, and ultimately ensure that the ICC continues to serve as a pillar of justice, accountability, and the rule of law. I thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Ms. Shiran Said, Deputy Director General, Constitutional Development Department of Justice and Constitutional Development of South Africa. You have the floor.
Madam President, the delegation from the Republic of South Africa thanks you for the opportunity to address the special session. Allow our delegation to also express that South Africa aligns with the statement delivered by Mexico on behalf of the cross-regional group of states. South Africa is proud to have been one of the ardent proponents of the adoption of the Rome Statute in 1998. South Africa has always advocated for a balanced approach to international criminal justice, one that respects the fight against impunity, the principle of sovereignty, human rights, and the rule of law. These are essential for the maintenance of international peace and security. Madam President, the reality is that the international legal architecture is under threat, and the multilateral system is strained. Punitive actions taken against judicial officers of the ICC are regrettable. It undermines the independence of the ICC and threatens the integrity of the institution. It is a direct affront to the principles of international justice. Even though South Africa has not yet ratified the Kambala amendments on the crime of aggression, we have always advocated for the widest scope of jurisdiction against impunity. Any activation of the ICC's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression must ensure legal clarity, coherence, and erased legal ambiguity. I thank you and the Secretariat for organizing this platform. This special session provides an opportunity to bring stability and legal certainty and supports the call for consensus. The decisions taken here must build the confidence of member states and summon hope for peoples across the world that the international justice system is effective and holds aggressors accountable. Madam President, this year, South Africa commemorates the 70th anniversary of the Freedom Charter, and in aspirational document which laid the foundation for our constitutional democracy. The Freedom Charter envisions a shared humanity across oceans and valleys. The Freedom Charter also states that South Africa shall strive to maintain world peace and the settlement of all international disputes by negotiation, not war. We stand by this, Madam President, and as South Africa reaffirms its support for the Rome Statute and the safeguarding of the integrity of international legal institutions. I thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Her Excellency Aneth Onanga, Deputy Permanent Representative of Gabon. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On behalf of my country, Gabon, I'd like to extend our heartfelt congratulations to you on the stellar job you're doing, steering our proceedings, the proceedings of the Assembly against the backdrop of many challenges. And through you, I also want to congratulate your country, Finland, a country particularly committed to promoting and strengthening criminal justice. The fight against impunity should remain an absolute imperative for the international community. Thus, Gabon would like to welcome that we're holding this extraordinary session dedicated to the amendment on the crime of aggression, which is also an opportunity for us to review the priceless contribution of the Rome Statute, as well as the good practices and the challenges thrown up by our collective commitment. Gabon would like to highlight that despite the challenges the court faces, the ICC remains an absolutely vital institution for promoting international criminal justice, and justice simply put. Without a permanent institution like the ICC, the commitments undertaken with a view to strengthening criminal justice would remain idle words. My country, Gabon, deposited its ratification instrument to the Rome Statute on the 20th of September 2000. We'd like to reiterate our unswerving commitment to the integrity of the Rome Statute and to the promotion of the rule of law. We also reassert our strong determination to combat impunity. This is a principled position from which we will not waver. Madam President, the principle of the court's complementarity to national jurisdictions set forth in the very first lines of the statute is a key innovation in the field of criminal justice, as it allows us to strengthen state sovereignty while allowing states to remain the primary guardians of national and international rules. This is why Gabon would like to underscore that effective cooperation requires building national capacity wherever there is a pressing need to do so. This is of particular importance as part of our efforts to promote international criminal justice that is compatible with and complementary to national processes, national cases, which is absolutely vital if we're to achieve lasting peace. Madam President, Gabon has not ratified the Kambala amendments. Nonetheless, we believe that a jurisdiction regime for the crime of aggression should be similar to that for other crimes, following within the court's jurisdiction. I thank you.
For your intervention.
President, thank you for your statement.
Her Excellency Ms. Fatumata Idora, Deputy Permanent Representative to the United Nations of Gambia.
Madam Chair, thank you for giving me the floor. The Gambia continues to express its unwavering support to the International Criminal Court and the Rome Statute. The Gambia strongly believes that despite the challenges, the intentionality and aspirations of the court towards adjudicating the most serious crimes of international concern, bearing on the severities of war crimes, genocide, and crimes against humanity, is particularly relevant today, especially in the light of the changing nature of conflicts and the illegal use of force. The Gambia welcomes this special session and calls on state parties to the Rome Statute to continue to support the work of the court as a crucial institution towards preventing widespread systematic and grave international crimes, aiding in global efforts to combat impunity, prevent atrocity crimes, and complement international accountability. Our delegation is of the position that there cannot be international peace and security in the absence of strong international judicial measures to deliver justice and accountability. In bringing our laws in line with the requirements of the Rome Statute, the Gambia has committed itself to the strengthening of international criminal justice by expanding for the first time crimes of severe international concern into criminal jurisdiction of our domestic courts to educate crimes against humanity, torture, and enforced disappearances. Excellency, Madam Chair, although the Gambia has not yet ratified the Kambala amendment owing to the required constitutional and legal processes to ensure ratification, nonetheless, the Gambia supports the draft resolution that seeks to harmonize the jurisdictional regime for the crime of aggression. In this spirit, we are of the considered view that all international crimes must be accorded the same level of severity, jurisdictional regime, and accountability frameworks. The crime of aggression must not stand as an exception to the end of horrors of aggression and its associated level of impunity and disregard for the rules-based international order. History has consistently shown that the recourse to aggression and its grave violation places a duty to prioritize remedying this loophole in our current international criminal justice system. To work towards this pertinent objective and required order, the ICC must be able to prosecute and determine cases on the crime of aggression under the same conditions and context that exists for a crime of genocide, war crimes, and crimes against humanity. The Gambia therefore supports harmonization and is therefore in favor of developing a strong legal framework to provide protection to all states against the heels of aggression, ensuring greater predictability and consistency in international criminal law. We also urge all other member states to support the draft resolution towards harmonization. I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Her Excellency Ms. Bahia Tatipli, Sharjah State Affairs Permanent Mission to the United Nations of the Kingdom of the Netherlands. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the floor. My delegation aligns itself with the statement made on behalf of the Group of Friends and would like to make a few comments in our national capacity. In a world marked by increasing polarization and violence, my delegation underlines the importance of upholding the international legal order. We state parties of the ICC established this very court and entrusted it with its important mandate to apply the norms of this legal order and to fight impunity for core international crimes. The ICC should be able to carry out its mandate without interference, threats, or intimidation. The Kingdom of the Netherlands deeply regrets that the court that we so carefully created and its officials are now confronted with external threats that impair its ability to function effectively. As host state of the ICC, the Kingdom of the Netherlands has unique responsibilities and obligations to ensure that the court can operate safely and independently. We are committed to fulfilling our obligations under the Headquarters Agreement between the court and the Kingdom of the Netherlands. We do underline that ultimately it is our shared responsibility to support the court and to enable it to fulfill its mandate by providing the budget and the cooperation it needs. After more than a quarter of a century, not all promises of the Rome Statute have been fulfilled. The special session of the Assembly of State Parties offers a unique opportunity to make substantive progress in closing gaps in the statute while keeping in mind the very best interests of the court. The Kingdom of the Netherlands is convinced that the court, with the strong support of the state parties and the valuable contributions of civil society organizations, will be able to continue to play a key role in the fight against impunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will now give the floor to His Excellency Mr. Mahet Bamiya, Deputy Permanent Representative to the United Nations of the State of Palestine.
Thank you, Madam President. The State of Palestine aligns itself with the statements delivered by Germany and Mexico on behalf of a group of states. For all of us who knew him or had the privilege to be in his presence, the spirit of Ben Frantz is present with us in this room, as he has been a lifelong light bearer on this journey. May we be inspired by the giants that preceded us as we consider the important matters before us. What will be our collective legacy? Either that we watched over the unraveling of the international law-based order that protects all of us, or we stood together to sustain and consolidate it. This order was not born out of ideals disconnected from reality, but rather from the experience of the horrors of the Second World War, including aggression, the Holocaust, the large-scale indiscriminate attacks against cities and their obliteration, leading to mass civilian casualties, illegal occupation, and the horrific treatment reserved to prisoners of war, and other daunting breaches of the rules dictated by our common and shared humanity. The rules enacted then were not a result of naivety, but of fully grasping the need to save future generations from the repeat of these crimes. The ICC itself was born out of horrors and of the realization that without accountability, the rules by themselves would not allow to prevent recurrence of crimes. It is our common and imperfect response to that reality. We have a duty beyond our own immediate interests towards victims. We have a duty to honor the memory of the victims of the past, to deliver justice to victims of the present, and to save those who might become victims in the future if we fail to act. When we speak of the crime of aggression, the supreme international crime, we speak of a crime against a nation. That crime is an integral part of the crimes foreseen in the Rome Statute and over which the court had jurisdiction. Is it less grave than the other crimes to justify a much more restrictive jurisdictional regime? The supreme international crime, a crime against a nation, a breach of the foundational principle, the bedrock of our international law-based order, the prohibition of the threat or use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state or in any other manner inconsistent with the purposes of the UN? If the answer is no, it is not less grave, and if victims of this crime deserve to be equally protected, and if perpetrators of this crime are not entitled to impunity, then harmonization is the only course of action. This is the unity we should strive for in this context and in any context, and we stand ready to work with all of you to advance this noble objective. And I thank you, Madam President.
I thank you. And the next speaker is His Excellency Mr. Innocent A. Ayew, Director Office of the Minister of State, of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of Nigeria. You have the floor.
Thank you for giving the floor to my delegation, Madam President. Nigeria affirms its commitment to Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court. We believe the issues which necessitated the elaboration of this important legal instrument are germane today as they were in 1998, when the Rome Statute was adopted by the global community. Since 2001, when this international crime statute was ratified to become part of our laws, Nigeria has remained a strong voice against egregious crimes of genocide, war crimes, crimes against humanity, and crime of aggression established by the statute. The ratification of the Rome Statute offered our delegation a framework for international cooperation and support to develop our national laws and capacity for investigating and prosecuting these egregious crimes. As our experiences have shown in the last two decades, the Rome Statute continues to provide a strong foundation to hold perpetrators of the most serious international crimes to account. Unless perpetrators of these crimes are made to pay for their actions, achieving international peace and security, as envisaged in the United Nations Charter, will remain a mirage. This august gathering has a special role to play in ensuring that the ICC is given the necessary support to actualize its mandate in the interest of international peace and security. Madam President, Nigeria considers the ICC a worthy partner in promoting international peace and accountability. Our partnership and cooperation in investigating serious crimes contribute to global efforts to deter future instances of genocide, crimes against humanity, war crimes, and crimes of aggression. This partnership aimed at upholding the rule of law and international justice, including the victims of serious crimes serves to reinforce our faith in addressing national serious crimes through multilateralism. The special session, this special session in our view, offers state parties another rare opportunity to take stock of the implementation of the Rome Statute and its amendments with a view to urgently addressing all the gaps that militate against the effective and efficient delivery of justice and accountability. It is our hope that state parties shall find the courage to work constructively for an outcome that will strengthen the ICC and global efforts in combating the egregious crimes as established in the Rome Statute. Nigeria stands ready to work with state parties towards the realization of concrete and productive outcomes. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Mr. Emil Raffar, Director of the International Law Department of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Czech Republic. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I wish to align with the statement delivered by the distinguished representative of Germany on behalf of Group of Friends and reaffirm our full support for the draft resolution submitted by Lichtenstein. In addition, I would make several brief comments in my national capacity. I would start with the famous quote by the chief United States prosecutor at the Nuremberg Trials, Mr. Robert H. Jackson. I quote, "The common sense of mankind demands that law shall not stop with the punishment of petty crimes by little people. It must also reach men who possess themselves of great power and make deliberate and concerted use of it to set in motion evils which leave no home in the world untouched." This statement powerfully underscores the gravity of the crime of aggression, laying a foundation for aggression to be later defined as the supreme international crime, and regrettably, this statement has not lost its relevance in the present days. We listen carefully to various concerns expressed by some of the state parties. We fully acknowledge the importance of the legal certainty of the jurisdictional regime to be applied to the crime of aggression. In our understanding, this is one of aspects of the very purpose of the current special session, to discuss in good faith and to clarify any legal concerns of state parties. Therefore, we are ready to engage constructively in achieving a much-needed, as well as much overdue, harmonization of jurisdictional rules pertaining to exercising of the court's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression. This is no time for complacency. We must act now and fulfill our commitments in order to closing the impunity gap for the gravest of international crimes, the crime of aggression. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank you. And the next speaker is Mr. Mikolov Bridula, First Secretary of the Permanent Mission of Ukraine to the United Nations.
Madam President, Ukraine aligns itself with the statement delivered by Germany on behalf of the Group of Friends for the review of the Rome Statute, of the Kambala amendments of the crimes of aggression, and would like to make the following remarks in our national capacity. Ukraine confirms its support of the International Criminal Court. We were the latest country who ratified the Rome Statute, as well as the Kambala amendment. The ratification of Rome Statute by Ukraine is a part of our state policy of ensuring accountability for the core international crimes. We appreciate the work, the active work of the court on investigation of situation in Ukraine and seeks arrest warrants for international crimes committed on the territory of Ukraine that were already issued, and look forward to seeing more arrest warrants for war crimes, crimes against humanity, and genocide. The harmonization of the judicial regime for all four core crimes is a legal continuation of the mentioned state policy of Ukraine, its logical continuation. Despite the fact that the proposed amendments won't bring accountability for aggression against Ukraine and that it's why we needed to establish the special tribunal for the crime of aggression against Ukraine, we believe that they can strengthen the legal system for the future cases of aggression to better uphold the commitment for impartial justice and international law. We believe that harmonization of the international regime for all four crimes is about defending a world where borders are respected and force is not the language of diplomacy. Law above politics, that's the principle we share. In this regard, we consider the proposal submitted by Costa Rica, Germany, Sierra Leone, Slovenia, and Vanuatu as a good foundation for further consideration toward the harmonization of the court jurisdiction. I thank you.
Thank you. And Ukraine was the last of the state party speakers today, and we would now move to observer states. And the first speaker is Her Excellency Ms. Zahra Erasadi, Deputy Permanent Representative to the UN of Iran.
Mesmera rahmaner rahim. Madam President, I would like to express my gratitude to you and the Secretariat for convening this meeting. As an observer, I would like to touch upon a few points. Just a couple of weeks ago, the Israeli terrorist regime initiated an unprovoked and premeditated aggression against the Islamic Republic of Iran while deliberately attacking civilian populated areas, killing more than 900s of people, including women and children as young as two months old and leaving thousands injured. The Israeli regime, as well as the United States, targeted Iranian peaceful and IAEA safeguarded nuclear facilities. These acts of aggression constitute gross violations of international law and the very purpose and principles of the Charter of the United Nations, in particular sovereignty, territorial integrity, and the prohibition of the threat or use of force inscribed therein and threaten international peace and security. Such attacks which also flagrante violate international humanitarian law and international human rights law and further and further constitute crime against humanity and war crimes, should be unequivocally condemned by all. Madam President, as we are convened here to address various views on how to ensure accountability for crimes of aggression and ending impunity, we should first realize the crux of the challenge, which is alarmingly rendering aggression against sovereign states prevalent, condoned, and normalized, that is double standards, selectivity, and lack of good faith. The reality is stark and bitter, but to respond to this pressing challenge, we need to first recognize it. Any exercise should not exacerbate these challenges, but effectively and commensurately respond to them. In this endeavor, we must be circumspect at malicious attempts to change the place of aggressor and victim. Such attempts must be prevented effectively. Self-defense must be defended. Without doubt, aggression must be penalized with severe consequences. Madam President, for the sake of bravery, we will submit our full statement to the Secretary to be placed on the website of the meeting. We will follow the deliberations and various aspects of the discussions while reserving any subsequent position on the matter. I thank you.
I thank you. And the next speaker on my list is Mr. Lin Lin Li, Counselor of the Permanent Mission to the United Nations of the People's Republic of China.
Thank you, President. China had always supported the fight against serious crimes that threaten international peace and security. And we attach great importance to the rule pleaded by the International Criminal Court in punishing the most serious international crimes and achieving justice. Regarding the review of the crime aggression under the Rome Statute, we would like to emphasize the following positions. First, the revision and the restriction over the crime of aggression must fully respect the sovereignty and the restriction of non-state parties. According to the Vienna Convention on the Law Treaties, a treaty does not create either obligations or rights for a third state without its consent. Therefore, the court should not exercise restriction over acts of aggression allegedly committed by nationals or non-state parties, or state parties that have not yet accepted amendments or acts of aggression allegedly committed within the territories of such states. Second, the review of the crime of aggression should not affect the function and authorities of the secret consul. The issue of the crime aggression concerns international peace and security. China has consistently maintained that the secret consul possesses exclusive authority to determine acts of aggression, which is part of the collective security mechanism established by the UN Charter with the secret consul at his call. The court's restriction over the crime of aggression should be examined within the overall framework of international law anchored by the UN Charter, which is also a requirement of the Rome Statute itself. Third, the court should strictly exercise its restriction in accordance with authorization under the Rome Statute. In face of a complex and turbulent international situation, the court should strictly adhere to the principle of complementarity, handle relevant situations independently, objectively, and impartially, and interpret and apply the Rome Statute and general international law comprehensively and in good faith, balance judicial justice with peace and stability, and avoid politicization and double standards. In closing, China would like to take this opportunity to express its gratitude to Columbia, the Chair of the Working Group on Amendments to the Rome Statute, and urges all parties to engage in thorough consultations on the review of the crime aggression, broadly solicit opinions from all parties, including non-state parties, seek consensus to the greatest extent, and proceed with caution and prudence on this important work. Thank you, President.
I thank you. And we will now proceed with statements by international organizations and other entities. And the speaker on my list is His Excellency Mr. Sergio Biazi, Secretary General of the Parliamentary Assembly of the Mediterranean. You have the floor.
Madam President, it is an honor for the Parliamentary Assembly of the Mediterranean to participate and contribute to this special session. Since 2015, our assembly attends the event of the ICC as an observer, and we fully support its work and its independence. The outcome of this session will have concrete impacts on the conduct and implementation of international law, fostering the ICC ability to deliver justice in a world that is increasingly characterized by war crimes and impunity. There can be no more ambiguity nor impunity for crimes of aggression and against humanity. There can be no more impunity for torture, rape, abduction, kidnapping, and systematic murder associated to a foreign aggression. There can be no more impunity for heads of regime who have commanded this ininious act. They are fully accountable. To make it happen, we need to rebuild and consolidate the trust in a reputation of the multilateral system of governance in line with the UN Charter, the international legal instruments, and the UN Pact for the future. We must respect and support the ICC. PAM, which gathers 35 member states from the Euro-Mediterranean and Gulf regions, remain fully committed to assisting the efforts of the ICC and the global community in this direction. The Kampala Amendments to the Rome Statutes are crucial to establish the ICC effective jurisdictional regime against act of aggression and to avoid the situation of impunity as witnessed recently in certain countries. The full accountability and criminalization of aggression shall serve in crucial deterrent, bringing the international community much closer to ensuring the respect of international and humanitarian law and the UN Charter. PAM is committed to defending the legitimacy and freedom as well as improving further the effectiveness of the ICC and its staff. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And lastly, we would come to the group of non-governmental organizations. The Bureau also recommended that 10 minutes be allocated to non-governmental organizations for the delivery of statements at the end of the general debate. Nonetheless, given the decision of the Assembly this morning to extend the statements to four minutes, we invite the five non-governmental organizations on the list of speakers not to exceed their statements over a agreed time of four minutes per statement. And the first one is Ms. Yasmina Gursin on behalf of the Coalition for the International Criminal Court.
Madam President, Excellencies, distinguished colleagues, I'm honored to speak today on behalf of the Coalition for the International Criminal Court, a global network of NGOs steadfast in our commitment to the ICC and the Rome Statute system. At the outset, we welcome the progress made thus far in the Working Group on Amendments with our thanks to Ambassador Quintana, who has led the process in the spirit of inclusivity, transparency, and respect. Throughout this process, civil society has remained actively engaged and meaningfully engaged in the work of the Working Group and also in this week's special session. At its 2024 session, the Assembly of States Parties decided to convene this special session on the review of the Amendments on the Crime of Aggression. Today's session offers the Assembly a crucial opportunity to address the shortcomings of the current jurisdictional framework and to take action to harmonize the court's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression. Harmonization of the court's jurisdiction over all four core crimes would close existing accountability gaps and strengthen not only the ICC as an institution, but also the broader Rome Statute system. Many members of civil society are firm in their belief that harmonization of the court's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression is crucial to combating double standards in the application of the court's jurisdiction. In conclusion, Excellencies, this is not simply a theoretical matter. Acts of aggression have occurred since the entry into force of the Rome Statute, and by taking action today to harmonize the court's jurisdiction, the Assembly would contribute to ending impunity for grave crimes and ensure that no victim is left behind, simply due to jurisdictional technicalities. Thank you.
I thank you. And the next speaker is Mr. Andrea Schuler on behalf of the European Center for Constitutional and Human Rights.
Dear Madam President, honorable delegates, in my statement, I would like to highlight the strong support of civil society for the harmonization of the Rome Statute over the crime of aggression. My organization, the ICCHR, has issued a joint statement calling for the reform, and I'm pleased to share that nearly 90 civil society organizations from around the world and all regions have endorsed it. We also co-lead the CICC team on the crime of aggression that met monthly since the beginning of the year and in parallel to the Working Group on Amendments. I will now read a brief excerpt from the statement. "We respectfully call on all state parties to take the steps required to amend the International Criminal Court's jurisdiction over the crime of aggression. What the international community needs is a legal framework that can end impunity and effectively deter state leaderships from waging aggressive wars. Recourse to aggression in the last years painfully illustrates that this reform is crucial and overdue. State parties must therefore seize the opportunity of this momentum to fill the gap in the ICC's jurisdiction. The current legal framework is too limited and leads to glaring accountability gaps. Only an amendment of the Rome Statute's jurisdiction can help ensure that state parties are better protected from the crime being committed against them and that the ICC will be in a position to ensure accountability. The amendment is also crucial to be able to hold accountable those who are responsible for causing immense suffering of entire populations, including to soldiers on both sides as well as civilians subjected to attacks, not all of which can be prosecuted as war crimes, but are part of the aggression itself. Finally, as a matter of consistency and legitimacy of international justice system, its framework must ensure accountability not only in a few instances, but with the aspiration to uphold the prohibition of the crime of aggression as universally as possible without selectivity and double standards. We urge state parties to seize the opportunity by harmonizing the conditions for the ICC's exercise of jurisdiction over the crime of aggression. Thank you very much."
I thank you. And I would now give floor to Mr. Eloy Urvaldi on behalf of the League pour la paix, le droit de l'homme et la justice. Vous avez la parole.
You have the floor, sir.
Madame la présidente.
Madam President, the League is honored to be taking the floor today. We are a civil society organization committed to the defense of human rights in the Democratic Republic of the Congo. We welcome the convening of this special session dedicated to the crime of aggression. We'd like to recall that the Kampala Amendments marked a serious step forward. However, their scope remains limited owing to a number of legal and political restrictions. The crime of aggression should be addressed just as rigorously as other crimes enshrined in the Rome Statute. This is not only about law, but about justice for the victims of conflicts ignited by state aggression, victims often left out of diplomatic calculations. In the Great Lakes region, where there are ongoing armed tensions, there have been no ratifications of the amendment to date. This legal vacuum fuels impunity. We call on states to set aside their political instruments and to ratify the amendments in full so as to guarantee justice as well as reparations for the victims. Last but not least, we call for victims to be placed squarely at the center of this debate. Strengthening the ICC's role is only possible with the victims' involvement. I thank you.
Merci pour votre...
I thank you for your statement.
And the next speaker is Ms. Jennifer Drachan, the Global Institute for the Prevention of Aggression. You have the floor.
Thank you. Distinguished delegates, it's an honor to address you. I represent the Global Institute for the Prevention of Aggression, a group of experts founded by the US Nuremberg Prosecutor Benjamin Ferenz and his son, Don Ferenz. You have a momentous decision before you, and it really comes down to whether you believe in the UN Charter and that leaders who foment aggressive war and other acts of aggression should face consequences. Many state parties see the benefits that harmonization could provide in terms of jurisdiction. They don't want their states to become the victims of aggression. But some states appear to still want to delay, and one wonders if this suggests they want to reserve to their leaders the ability to commit a manifest UN Charter violation without consequences. That would be beyond comprehension because, of course, they are already committed not to violate the UN Charter. But to these states urging you to delay and not reach a decision, I would ask if you believe in the precedent set at Nuremberg and whether you believe that precedent should only be enforced selectively, for instance, only when Russian nationals are implicated, but you do not stand for the rule of law more broadly? That would be untenable. Many states who have spoken eloquently here today, by contrast, appear willing to reject selectivity and double standards and to strengthen the ICC and doing so now. There is a strong text proposal in front of you. It would restore the Rome Statute's Article 12 jurisdiction to cover all four Rome Statute crimes. There is also a strong draft text resolution that would accompany the amendment. Yes, there are some wording questions, but these are potentially resolvable, and one should not put off the resolution potentially for years. How many victims of aggressive war would have to die waiting for these states to be ready to tackle the issue if they would ever truly be willing? The ICC needs more jurisdiction over this crime. There are many states parties in this room who are committed to that goal, and this is what needs to be accomplished at this special session. Thank you.
I thank you. And the last speaker of the list of general debate is Honorary Sied Navet Gamar on behalf of the Parliamentarians for Global Action. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Excellencies, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen, it is with great honor that I stand before you today as the President of the Parliamentarians for Global Action, a non-partisan NGO network of over 1,000 delegates from 150 parliaments of all the regions of the world, acting in their individual capacity to advocate for human rights, democracy, justice, and peace. Excellencies, as we gather here, we are confronted with a proliferation of aggressive wars whose heaviest toll, as always, falls on civilians. While the multilateral order is shaken and diplomacy weakened, the system of international criminal justice we have collectively built over decades is under threat of collapse. Yet today, as the guardians of an ideal of conscience, you have the unique opportunity and the profound responsibility to reinforce the Rome Statute system. The time for decisive action is now. For years, Parliamentarians for Global Action has championed not only the ratification of the Kampala Amendments, but also the urgent need to close the accountability gap by aligning the International Criminal Court's jurisdiction over the crimes of aggression with one of genocide, war crimes, and crimes against humanity. We have witnessed firsthand the suffering of civilians who paid the price for the limitations of selective accountability. To end impunity, there is only one path forward: remove the constraints preventing the International Criminal Court the International Criminal Court from fulfilling its full mandate. Ensure the amendment harmonizing the jurisdiction over the crime of aggression with other three crimes enters into force under Article 1, 2, 1, 5 of the Rome Statute, the same procedure as the original Kampala Amendments. The decision you will take will also challenge non-party states who use claims of selective justice to stay outside the Rome Statute system. Prove them wrong. Excellencies, there is no room for compromise that would betray the victims of this atrocity and crime. Give priority to justice. Close the accountability gap. Thank you.
And that brings us to the end of our list of speakers in the general debate. I would like to thank all the speakers for their statements presented during the general debate, agenda item, and all the support they have pledged for the court. If, unless there are any other requests for the floor, I declare Agenda Item 7, General Since our deliberations this morning, we have received two more requests for waivers on areas. And if the Assembly allows, we could now turn back to Agenda Item States in areas. Those two countries, Chad and the Republic of Guinea, as we decided with respect to the four countries that had requested waivers to allow them, to accord them waiver of loss of voting rights, if this Assembly agrees, we would do the same with respect to Chad and Republic of Guinea. And we would, of course, bear in mind what I said in the morning, that we would foresee that the decision of the Assembly at its 24th session should address this criteria when requesting for waivers of loss of voting rights. Thus, the Assembly agreed that we would also accord a waiver to Chad and Republic of Guinea. I do not see any objection. It is so decided. As was agreed in the morning, we will now proceed with the Working Group on the Kampala Review. I suggest we take a short break and reconvene in five minutes in the format of a working group, and I would close this session of the plenary meeting, and we would reconvene in five minutes in the format of working group.